I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you motion to accept the resignation of Lonnie Baker?
So who?
Ms. Selany is retired and we wanted, we needed to accept her retirement before we moved on. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll say thank you to Lonnie Baker for her work. Okay. Now, Mr. Maguire, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Well, as you remember from last year, we had the thunderstorm. We moved our whole retire, honoring our retiring event over to the elementary school. So, we're doing better this year. This is all going to go a lot more smoothly. We'll honor our retirees and that's the goal. That's one of the main goals of our June meeting. I added up real quickly, I think we're honoring more than 150 years of service to the Truemansburg Central School District. This is a special place. We have special employees, we have special students, and we enjoy the support of an amazing community. So tonight, we are celebrating our retirees. And as, I'll introduce each one and then I'm going to ask their principal to say a few words about them. And then Tina has gathered in what we give to our retirees, which is a clock or was there anything besides a clock?
No.
Nope, it's a clock. It's a clock with a battery in it this year. So, we are really on top of it. First of all, Kathy Bear, who has dedicated 20 years of service to Truemansburg Central School District as an elementary education teacher. And most recently, our math specialist. Kathy's not here, but Jeanne is. So, I'll let Jeanne say a few words about Kathy.
Can you hear us?
No.
Just there.
Do you want me to get him a yell?
I think so. I'd be nice if they could hear.
I can speak louder. Really.
Thank you, John.
Okay, now we're going to.
Now, that probably would be too loud, but I would rather that you can hear. All right, so Kathy Bear, since I've been at Truemansburg Elementary, has taught third grade and most recently has been our math specialist, as Michael shared. And students describe her as awesome, smart, likable, fun, caring, and the list just goes on. Staff describes her as inspiring her students to think for themselves, embrace mistakes, face their challenges, and most importantly, to be kind. She's motivated students to see their education as a means of understanding the world. Mrs. Bear worked and advocated for her students and cared for her family at school. And now, she is caring for her very own grandson Teddy. And she could not be happier. So, congratulations, Mrs. Bear, and I thank her so much for all she's done for our, our community here.
All right, and next, please join me in honoring Valerie Fontaine. Valerie has dedicated 30 years of service to the Truemansburg Central School District as an elementary education teacher and as a special education teacher. So Valerie will ask you to come down and Jeanne will say a few things for you.
It's very exciting to come down. Sorry about that. All right, so after 30 wonderful years as a teacher, Ms. Fontaine is retiring. She has taught second grade for 19 years, as well as kindergarten and many other grade levels as a special education teacher. Throughout the years, she has been a kind and considerate colleague. She is known as being very hardworking and can always be counted on to help any student or staff member. We've also been fortunate enough to have Vale's therapy dog, Thistle, with us for many years. And we're all very sad that we lost Thistle a few weeks ago. And so, our thoughts are with her, but we also want to recognize Thistle tonight as well. So, thank you, Vale, for all your many years of work for our students and our staff. You'll be missed.
Thanks, Ma. And next, Mary Jane Richmond. Mary Jane has dedicated 21 years of service to the Truemansburg Central School District as a science, math, and elementary education teacher. So MJ, can you come on down, please?
All right. MJ, encouraging, compassionate, kind teacher. Those are just some words that come to mind when we think about Ms. Richmond. She lives the words caring for your community every day with her students, their families, and her colleagues. Ms. Richmond brings such heart to her teaching because it is, it is more than a career. It is a part of her life. She is a lifelong learner who has passed knowledge on to her students, learning right along with them. Even in retirement, her students can still expect to see her at their high school graduation rehearsal, as she has always done, passing on things she has saved for them since they were little. And now, it sounds like the adventure may continue on to India. So, we wish you the best of luck and the people there are very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Good luck in India. Hi, it's MJ. And now, I'm going to ask John King, our high school principal, to say a few words about Lonnie Baker.
So Lonnie unfortunately is not able to be here this evening. Lonnie has served for 17 years and most, my experience with her is the last six years, Lonnie has always been the rock in our in-school suspension room, which doesn't always seem like the most fun place to be. But I can tell you, the thing that is most exceptional about Lonnie is her ability to take a kid who comes into that room and most often, when kids are sent there, they're not real happy about going there. But Lonnie has an uncanny ability to help bring them down and calm them down and talk them off of whatever angry moment they're having and always is able to get them to a better place, sometimes before they have to go in and meet with the dean and sometimes after they've just come from talking to the dean. So she just always had that compassionate ability to, to connect with a kid and not never judge and always help them get to a better place. So Lonnie is very much going to be missed. She's been a staple in there the last six years since I've been there and I know for many years before that. So Lonnie has been a wonderful addition to our high school and a great person for our kids. And she, I know she really made a difference for so many kids and helped a lot of kids get through some really rough times and ultimately move on to graduation. So, thank you to Lonnie.
All right, and next, from our food service department, Fern Holman-Camp has dedicated 29 years of service to the Truemansburg Central School District as a food service helper and a cook. And, and I would just like to say, for a while after Fern announced her retirement, I wasn't sure she would attend tonight, but I am told that I'm grateful to her sister for making her come. I can't believe that all our assistant superintendent will speak too.
So I'm guessing I know Fern a little bit and I think Fern's probably far more comfortable staying where she's at right now. Is that correct, Fern? You stay there and we'll still speak highly of you. I, I have a few words this evening provided by Beth Kraus, our food service director, and she was not able to be here this evening. So as Michael stated, Fern has worked with us for 29 years preparing lunches in the school lunch department. And what that really equates to in terms of numbers, 510,000 meals she has prepared for our students and staff. That is, that is a lot. No wonder she wants to retire at this point. Beth has stated that not only the students, but also the staff will be talking about her chicken salad, her broccoli soup, pasta salad, and many other exciting recipes for years to come. Fern has seen many changes over the years. She cooks with passion and is a friend to many. Fern, you'll be greatly missed, but we wish you much happiness and hope as you start your new chapter. Thanks, Fern.
Fern also has worked in the high school the entire time I've been here, and I just want to say thank you because Fern, not only does she cook lunches every morning, or breakfast every morning and lunch every day, it's also the little things that really matter, the ability to remember when the principal forgot that we need cookies for an awards ceremony. And she always remembered exactly what we needed for ju, and always had just the right thing to make the events special. So, thank you Fern for everything that you've done for our high school.
The board is wondering what's going to happen next. You're not moving. Well, we're coming to you. Thanks, thanks Fern for being here. And next, from our transportation department, Lori Smith has dedicated 15 years of service to Truemansburg Central School District as a bus driver. And I've invited Joe Naglioka to say a few words about Lori. Lori, if you know, will come if you don't come down. But you're so far up, it might be like on the Rex or something.
So I don't have any cool statistics like Kimberly had, but I'm guessing that Lori has traveled a couple hundred thousand miles in her time here at Truemansburg. So, kudos to Lori. But Lori began her career here at Truemansburg in the fall of 2000 as a sub. Is that correct, Lori? That's what the paperwork should be. Since I wasn't here, I don't know if it's true. After driving a bus as a sub, a bus driver for a year, she was crazy enough to sign on as a full-time driver. Over the past almost two years, I've had the privilege of working with Lori. What I observe about Lori is that she's a fantastic bus driver. The kids absolutely love her. She gets along well with staff and isn't afraid to participate and share her suggestions for improvements. She is an integral part of our transportation team here at Truemansburg and she will surely be missed. Thankfully, we have her signing on as a sub driver. I think she's just, because 15 years of kids screaming in her ear just isn't. Thank you Lori, for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, thank you for signing on.
Thanks Lori. And from our operations and maintenance department, Phil Smith has dedicated 22 years of service to the Truemansburg Central School District as a special projects cleaner and a custodian. And I will say, despite pretty much begging Phil to be here tonight, he said, "Don't want to go home? I'm not coming back." So I'm going to ask John to say.
So, yes, unfortunately, Phil's not here. Phil, again, 22 years and again, I had the privilege to work with him for the last six years. He's been the head custodian here in the high school building. And if you've ever walked the halls of our high school, you know that our building is immaculately clean. And that is very much to do with Phil and his, and his consistency and efforts every single day. Phil, if you know him, you know that he is a former military. He serves as the head custodian just like he's in the military. He is regular, he is prompt, he's on time, he does everything with precision, and he knows exactly every square inch of this entire building and what it needs to stay beautiful. So Phil is going to be very much missed next year. I'm really afraid of what will come, but I'm sure hopefully we'll find some, someone to fill his big shoes. But again, the thing that makes Phil special in our building, and again, looking around and see a couple of high school folks that have had the privilege of working with him, you know that Phil is a person who never, ever shirk his duty. If there is a kid who needs help fixing a locker, Phil is there. If somebody spills something in the hallway, Phil is right there. And he, and he never, ever has a negative word about anything. It's always, "Sure, what do you need?" And that's Phil. So, we're going to miss Phil a whole bunch and if you see him in the next couple of weeks, he's got a few more months till they get to grass. If you see him, please thank him for all of his years of service to the high school and the district.
And now, we're going to honor Peter Cook, and I'm going to turn this over to Jane.
Why, thank you. Yes, Mr. Cook, who is leaving us after nine years, although there are times when I think he might feel as though it was more than nine years. So Peter, we're going to miss you. I would particularly miss a very quiet, calm, clear voice of reason that makes us all go, "Oh, yeah, what is that?"
Peter, I thought long and hard about writing a speech about this, but I couldn't do it without putting some politics in it.
I'm trying.
But the very best I can come up with is a very sincere thank you.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Well, I didn't know I was going to be talking tonight, but I really appreciate like one year we've had together. Thank you for being a good model for service.
Well, I figured I might as well slip this in. Would you please thank you? Yeah, well, as, as our representative to the Central New York State School Association, I just want to thank you for your dedication, your service. I am just so impressed by all you've managed to accomplish if you're down on the board. You've spent, now, I have here 12 years, it's been nine. That's right, only nine. Nine, okay. Well, obviously, they were so impressed at CNY, they just.
That's why they felt so long.
Many people do not realize the amount of time and the degree of responsibility that school board service entails, that it's a purely volunteer position and often quite time consuming. To be an effective school board member requires qualities such as commitment, doing your homework, working well with others, and perseverance. Peter has simply demonstrated all of these qualities on a regular basis. Most importantly, it requires always keeping the best interests of the students at the center of everything you do, including making certain that their stairwells are well painted. So, your fellow school board members and Central New York School Boards Association respect and deeply appreciate the time and hard work you have devoted to benefit the children of our community, and we wish to present you with a small token of appreciation you and for your generous contribution to public education. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with Peter since he had children in the middle school, so our relationship goes back a little more than, than nine years. And the things that I've always admired and respected about him, his sense of integrity, his selflessness, his dedication to students and his constant student orientation in terms of wanting what's best for them. I've also always secretly appreciated his passion for cleaning up and painting those bill school stairs, although that was a little self-interest in there. But Peter, it's been a pleasure working with you on the board because all those traits that I admired in you as a parent and as a board member while I was a school administrator has been equally a pleasure working with you. And I think you've reached the perfect balance between your dedication to our students and your responsibility and dedication to our community on a taxpayer base. So, thank you for your years of service and your integrity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service here at Truemansburg. Very, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're one of these, you're one of the reasons this is a great community to live in and it's been a great servant with you all these years. It's, it's going to be a different conversation without you around.
Oh, it's my turn. What's that?
You got a hot mic?
Well, it's been a, a long ride. Nine years doesn't seem like that long, but when you're on the school board, it, it's a long time. I have a long conference right now with the people right here. I think we have a wonderful, this is actually, in my nine years, in my, this is all my opinion, of course. We have the best group here that we have had. And I know that I have a replacement, Sarah Bogus, who is going to do extremely well, way better than I ever did. So, we're looking forward to seeing that. I'd like to thank everybody individually, I will. I think I've gotten mad at almost all of you except the newcomers. The good news is I get over in about a day and I forgot what I was mad about. Okay, can usually attest to that. Thanks Anna very much for, you've been an extremely loyal student. It's great, I know you have a busy schedule. It's wonderful that you have a time for this. I think you've probably attended more than any other student in our school. Very good. I'd like to thank Jane for being an incredibly able leader in the past year. One year, you got one more?
Well, it feels like ten, but it's only one.
Jane always brings a sort of a different question to the table. It's like, "What? Oh, that's a good idea." She's been great to serve with. I'd like to thank Doug, who is probably the most dedicated school board member in the state of New York, I think. And she brings incredible power and experience to our school district, our little district. Like Gary, who is, when he got on the board, I always thought, I don't know if I'm going to agree with him very much. But I think I've agreed with him more than anybody else on the board. I'm shocked and thrilled, Gary. And Gary brings incredible intelligence, very futuristic looking, very experienced, wonderful school board member. I'd like to thank Michelle, for, I, I don't know her well, she's been on the board for a year, but she is trying to bring the school and the community into tighter relationship and I think it's a wonderful effort that she's putting on. I'd like to thank Frank for not swearing one tenth as much in public as he does. I thank you Frank. But Frank also very passionate about our school district, very, brings great intelligence and, and always looking to the future of what, what we can do for our district. I'd like to thank John, who I probably agree with about less than half the time, but there's nobody more dedicated to the young people in our district. And if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have pre-K. I'm convinced of it. And he's done just a fantastic job of bringing that, bringing that into our district. Lifetime John King, you're not off the hook, John, for being an incredibly positive influence in our school. You know, when the kids get to high school, they got four more years and John is just, he does everything he can in his power to help these kids get along. I think it's wonderful. Joe, I don't know very well, but I, I'm on the facilities with him and I can tell that things are going really well. He's, I think he's turned it around a bit and I'm looking forward to the, everything about the future of our facilities and our support staff. Angie, I don't know very well again, but I think she's tough and smart and I think that's what we need for somebody in special ed, leading the special ed. Again, Josh, I don't know very well, but I think he's brought maturity to the middle school and the leadership that we haven't had since Gary left. And I appreciate that much. I'd like to thank Jeanne for being the ultimate elementary school principal. She absolutely loves the kids. She has the biggest responsibility of all the principals and she handles it extremely well. I'd like to thank Tina over there for keeping me going, informed as to what, what I need to do next. Because without her, I'm not a big computer guy.
So what are we going to do without that pigeon?
I know.
And that cannon string from his helmet.
Anyway, thank you very much, Tina. I'd like to thank Kimberly, if I think if I had a retirement account, and she did them, I would go right to her. She literally has turned the finances of this district around so that I'm, I'm very comfortable where, where we need to be in the future looks really good. And Michael, of course, I'd like to thank. He came out of Idaho, came into this very New Yorky place. Took him a year or two to learn all the ins and outs and probably, you'll keep learning, I guess. But he has brought incredible leadership and maturity. He's got a wonderful collaborative approach in our district, like the choir director he was, and he seems to get everybody on the same page more or less sooner or later. So, most of all, I'm just grateful to have, be surrounded by these people and I'm very positive about the future of this district. Thank you very much.
I don't know much, how much time can your handshake can you do to hold that? Do we, Michael, we have one.
Yep.
That comes later. We are going to step off the agenda just enough to honor Jane George. And John King knows the most about this, so I'm going to let him announce.
This is going to come as a surprise to Jane. She doesn't really know what this is all about, but I would like to invite Joe. She doesn't really know what this is all about, but I would like to invite Cheryl Reynolds from the Tompkins Trust Company to come up to the, and she has a presentation to make.
All right. Thanks guys for ruining my surprise. Part I was looking forward to.
Well, just don't be surprised.
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Cheryl Reynolds, Assistant Vice President and Manager of the Truensberg Office of the Tompkins Trust Company. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to present a Raymond Van Howe Teacher Award to a member of the staff of Charles Oak Dickerson High School. So let me tell you a little bit about this award first. Tompkins Trust Company established the Raymond Van Howe Teacher Award in nineteen eighty-nine to honor the late Raymond Van Howe, Trust Company President and Chief Executive Officer from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-nine. Ray was a graduate of the University of Michigan and the University of Connecticut School of Law. He was committed to education and to the Tompkins County community. At the time he retired, the Trust Company honored him by creating a twenty-five-thousand-dollar endowment and with the earnings on the endowment to be used to fund awards recognizing outstanding efforts in primary and secondary education in Tompkins County. The endowment is administered by the Legacy Foundation of Tompkins County. There's a joint awards selection committee that solicits nominations for all Tompkins County principals, administrators, and district superintendents. Since nineteen ninety-one, eighty-eight educators have been recognized with certificates and monetary awards totaling over forty-three thousand dollars. These recipients were honored for their exceptional ability, effort, and quantifiable results in improving primary and secondary education in Tompkins County. So the award selection committee consists of five members, three appointed by the Legacy Foundation and two appointed by Tompkins Trust Company. The committee is chaired by Fran Benedict, former Executive Vice President and Ward Member of the Trust Company, and the other Sunday Committeeer, James Brown, Executive Director of the United Way, Lynette Schofield, owner of William Henry Miller Inn, Jean McBeaters of the Legacy Foundation of Tompkins County, and Kathy Hobert, Vice President and Trust Officer of the Tompkins Trust Company. So today, I am pleased to present a Raymond Van Howe Teacher Award to Jane George. Very well deserving. John King nominated Jane for this award for her thoughtful and vision of diversity and advocacy for human rights and to her instruction of high school English. During her tenure at Charles Oak Dickerson High School, Jane has taught multiple grade levels with all types of students and consistently challenges students to think about the world outside of our community and to think about how they can make the world a better place. Jane utilizes the English content and selective works of world literature to help her students from our rural community to expand their understanding of what life is like in other parts of the world. Jane goes beyond simply making her students aware of the issues faced by children in communities around the world. She also fosters the culture of advocacy. For example, this year, her ninth-grade students created community action events to raise funds for a sister school in Africa. After learning about child soldiers and the lack of education, her students wanted to take action. They worked to create a way to support education in a nation that had been ravaged by civil In addition to the work that Jane does in the classroom, she has also been the advisor for an extracurricular club called Thumtastics. This club promotes gender equality and has supported a wide variety of social issues in our school community and in the larger ethnic area. This group was the first of its kind in the area and through their work, a number of other high schools in the area have created similar groups. We sponsor several events around the ethnic area and have teamed up with the Ethic Advocacy Center to hold awareness events, fundraisers, and social events that promote safety, healthy relationships, and gender equality. Jane George not only teaches students the skills needed to be better readers and writers, she teaches them to be global thinkers and better citizens. She is a very deserving recipient of a two thousand sixteen Raymond Van Howe Teacher Award. Congratulations Jane. If you come up... So we have award for Jane as well as a nice honorary award.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you sir. And thank you all and congratulations on all of you for being able to throw away your warm cloths. Hopefully you will enjoy the morning and hopefully you will take a moment to join us this evening out in the lobby because we have cake and things to drink and sing.
That's it. Those are, we're going to think of...